I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on June 18th at 6:00 PM. All council members are here and present, and with that, can you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Aye.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Squali Tribe and the Squawson Island Tribe. We have one amendment to this night, to this evening's agenda. I move that we amend the agenda to remove item 13B, the Marvin Road, Brindian Campus Well Phase One Bid Award for a lettered date. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Can you pause pause?
Yes.
There's been some communication between the city and some of the bidders, and the city's further evaluating the bids and conducting some further review.
We're just, at this point, I think it makes sense to take this off as they conduct a little more background on some issues that was raised. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to amend this agenda and adopt the agenda and consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? In that motion unanimously carries, we've adopted the amended agenda. Next up, we had one written public comment that was received and distributed, but we didn't have anyone who signed up or anyone here today. Is anyone wishing to address this council? I see no one in the audience, so it doesn't look that way. Next up on our amended agenda is under resolutions, eleven fifty for public comment and public hearing policies update. Shannon.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I am here tonight with two resolutions in front of you for consideration regarding public comment and public hearing policies. Just as a reminder, this was previously reviewed at the Lacey City Council meeting on May 7th. We also took this topic to the Commission on Equity, the Lacey Youth Council, and had multiple conversations with advisory board staff liaisons across various advisory boards. The recommendation tonight is to adopt resolution 1150, updating the Lacey City Council Policy and Procedures Manual, changing section 707, changing public comment and public hearing policies. And in addition to that, as a second item would be to adopt resolution 1151, updating the Advisory Board Handbook for the same effect. So really quickly, not to belabor this, just to provide a succinct overview of what was provided during the May 7th presentation, we did go over some background about how recently there has been an extreme uptick in Zoom bombing across local municipalities. And since the last time I presented this, there was actually an additional Zoom bombing at the city of Tacoma. And so these are continuing to happen, and the city of Tacoma is currently taking a look at their policies for remote public comment as we speak. We took a look at the U.S. Constitution and First Amendment rights and the right of freedom of speech. We also took a look at what qualified as hate speech, and we also distinguished hate speech from what was hate crime offenses per the RCW. In addition to that, we also reviewed what public comment was per our RCWs and the OPMA. Specifically, we talked about how public comment is considered a limited public forum for free speech purposes, in that governments can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech, provided that the regulations are reasonable and content neutral. Specifically, content neutral means without regards to substance of message or expression. We also talked about how pursuant to the OPMA's, this body, as well as other advisory board bodies, must receive public comment at all regular meetings of the governing body where final action is taken. As part of the meeting, we took a look at the current policies, and we talked about how what's currently in the Policy and Procedures Manual is very polite and permissive, but not standardized and not directive. So for example, there's a lot of words like encouraged, asked, to, may, excuse me, sorry about that, as a couple of examples. We presented this on May 7th, and we received some feedback from this body, and with that feedback, we integrated into an updated draft that I want to take some time just to briefly go over tonight. So specifically with the Lacey City Council Policies and Procedures Manual, we updated the policy, the public comment policy and the public hearing policy. We also updated just some design features to align with some of our new design standards at the city. So for public comments, it does allow for in-person, remote, and written public comments. Specifically for in-person public comment, it does state that everybody providing public comment will need to sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Similarly, for remote public comment, it does state that they would be required to preregister two hours in advance of the meeting, and very similarly, that written public comment would be, needed to be provided two hours in advance of a meeting. All individuals who are providing public comment in person or remote would need to provide their name, their city of residence or connection to the city, and the topic or subject matter of their comments. Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, so how would someone go about signing up two hours before the meeting if they were going to comment on Zoom or whatever?
Yeah, so this is our practice currently, Councilmember Greenstein, where if you log onto the Zoom link for the meeting itself, it will ask you to preregister, and one of the questions that it'll ask you is if you want to provide public comment, and so you would register there. And so for the purposes of this new policy, we would just extend it to ask an additional question of what the name, city of residence, or connection to the city, and then also what the subject matter would be.
Thank you.
By the way-
Would it be better, wait till the end to ask questions or ask questions now?
Up to the council.
If you have a question, go ahead and-
Just with the three minutes, it's something that we have, we tell them it hasn't been enforced, so are we actually, how do we plan on actually enforcing that, because I think it should be standardized and made sure that's followed?
I imagine-
Yeah, so one of the things that we were able to take a look at as we were searching on this is that we have a ability to add a timer on our Zoom feed here, so that would show up on the projector here. It would also show up for end users, too, who are watching or participating via Zoom. And so when the time ended, the three-minute timer, it would be up to the presiding officer to say, you know, thank you for your comments, and we're moving on to the next commenter.
So-
But that still, I think, leaves that-
Yeah, so-
I think we need a set.
Will the microphone automatically be turned off at three minutes, or do I need to, at three minutes, interject and say, your time is up?
So at three minutes, the microphone will not automatically turn off. We can turn off the microphone. It does require us accessing some of the technology behind, but I think for a first kind of just notice of the time expiring, that could be something that the presiding officer does without us having to mute it. We can set up a system here at the clerk's office or at this table to replicate what's here so that we can mute it at three minutes.
You know-
Can we turn the camera off, too?
Yeah. I think we have to be really careful here and be consistent, and so I think it's a little difficult if you're going to leave, leaving it up to the presiding officer to try to get it right and be consistent every single time. I think you're asking a lot. It would be a lot better if, I believe, if we could make a statement that you will have three minutes, and after your three minutes, your, your, the microphone will be turned, you know, will be turned off, and we'll go on to the next, you know, the next person who wants to. I, I think something automatic probably needs to happen instead of leave-
A highly visible countdown, you know, timer, I think visually for the person, because you have no idea when you're up there, really, how long it's-
No, and I think we will probably see a timer now, but I mean-
Or will the person up there, if the person's here in person, will they say-
They do, they see it on that screen.
So-
If they're paying attention, but I do think it'd be nice if something automatically happened, because sure, most of the time, it's no problem, but we're trying to implement something for the worst-case scenario of someone bombing, right? And so I really feel like that should be done automatically, because if you don't do it automatically sometimes, but you do it the other times, then you're treating people differently.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, like I said, we have the technology to set that up where we can have the microphone cut off. We just don't currently have it set up, so that's certainly something that we could take a look at and making sure that we set up. It would just be about, again, replicating what we have behind us, to have something stationed in front of us so that we could cut that off. The timer would show up here, again, how much time the individual has left on their public comment.
I, I'm just recommending that we try to probably go to that technology as soon as we possibly can, and then we can be consistent from here on out. I think it's really tough if you're putting it on the presiding officer to try to manage this.
It's making you look like the bad guy, kind of, in these scenarios, and it's not, not a good position to be in.
Uh-uh.
And each presiding officer is different.
I think one might let it go a little bit longer than the next, and that's not-
And you have to have consistency, or what we're trying to do, and I just want to be fair for everyone, and, but then we have to treat everyone the same, so.
Well, that's, I certainly appreciate the sentiment of treating everybody the same, but Shannon, if there's a commenter in person, shutting off the mic isn't going to have much effect there, I mean, if I'm correct.
No, I agree, but it does signal that time is done automatically, you know, and so that person's being treated the same way someone online would be, be treated then in that circumstance.
If I may. I, I view it as like someone running on the field during a sporting event, and, you know, the cameras used to follow them, and, you know, I'm sure they probably even had volume at, at some point in time, but now the cameras don't even, you know, pay any attention to them, it's just kind of, they let security take care of it, and I, I think this is the same way, just they shouldn't get any attention, especially if their intent is to go past and well beyond that three minutes.
Yeah. I just, I want consistency, and I feel like if we should do it the same, we can easily do it, mute someone and take them off online, there should be something similar that happens here in person.
And that can, that can be, that can be developed, as has been mentioned. The other thing, too, is I notice is while the speaker is speaking currently, the time does show up over there, but the presiding officer is not looking that direction, so having that time clock up on that screen also will help in that recognition. And as, as Dave said, in council chambers, there, even the mic turning off, it's a signal, but they still can be there, so it's still going to be a comment on the presiding officer and the body to, to also communicate to the individual that their time is up as well.
It's really easy to be able to say, your, you know, your microphone's turned off, can we go to the next person? You're not making me be the bad guy every time.
But seeing as there's a general consensus amongst council, we can move forward and put in the, the equipment to be able to set that up in the future.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so in addition to the limitation to three minutes and not having the ability to donate any of your time to any other individuals, what's written in there, and this is written permissive, so this could happen, the presiding officer could limit the amount of time to a specific issue. For public comment, the way we have it drafted currently is that it would be for a 30-minute period, and if there wasn't enough public comment, and I'll use the example of, of tonight, then public comment would close effectively after the last speaker. It could be extended if there were a lot of speakers that wanted to provide comment that night, and it can also be extended to the last agenda item on the council's agenda as well. So this body could approve extending from 30 minutes to 45 for that period. It could also say, you know, we're extending it 15 minutes, and then we're going to add an additional public comment period at the end of the agenda for any additional comments that we may not hear within that 45-minute period.
Do we also have the ability to accept public comment? Sometimes, especially in a, like a work session environment, there's an opportunity to get public comment on a civic issue that we're talking about because, because someone's here, and maybe we, they weren't expecting to, to speak, but they have pertinent information to help the council make a decision. Sometimes this council has reached out and asked for, you know, for public comment specifically in that circumstance. Would, would this allow us to do that going forward?
So currently, the way that the Policy and Procedures Manual is written is that there is no public comment period during work sessions, and I think like the, you know, city attorney highlighted and you, Mr. Mayor, highlighted of wanting consistency, you know, whether individuals would see other individuals providing feedback to the council and then thinking that there would be opportunities on every subject or item that comes before the council during a work session could be very confusing to members of the public, and it also kind of stands in opposition to that providing consistency to all community members.
Is there going to be a way that we can-
I would have to think there's some way we can do that, because I agree with you on that, Andy. We've had many occasions at a work session where someone was here, and we were talking about a topic, we, we wanted their input on it.
Yeah.
You know, I can, I can think of a dozen times at least that that's happened.
Over the years, for sure.
Last week.
Yeah, it happened last week, and so I, I, again, the way there's consistency is you have it specifically written in your, in your, in this handbook that is letting everyone know what the policy is, and so I don't, I, I think it's made, might be difficult, but I think there should be some reference that a council can, may decide, I don't know. Councilmember?
I think we can't have it both ways, right? We have to come up with some way of having it standardized, otherwise people will see us doing what we did last week and think, oh, if I go, I'll have a chance to speak, they'll point to me, and I'll get a chance to come up to the table. I think there is language that is currently lined out in the draft that we might be able to put back in that could give us a little bit more discretion, and the public comment we received, the written public comment, talked about this, but it was discretionary language that said the mayor could allow folks not registered to speak, and so we took that out, and I know that we're trying to be thoughtful about the way that we allow folks, especially remote participants, to speak, but I think if we reincorporated that and maybe adjusted it so it was, you know, discretionary, the mayor can, with the approval of the council, allow those who have not registered to speak, then that would give us that opportunity, but it wouldn't be an assumption that that's always going to be there, but it would be a, a decision made by the body at the time.
Could, could there be a way to have that language where then it will also say, if it is associated with a specific topic that is up for discussion during the work session?
Councilmembers, if I, if I could, too, if we go back to what public comment is and it being that limited public forum, and if you allow one individual to speak on a certain topic, but then don't have the consistency of allowing other individuals to provide comment, whether or not it is truly associated with the topic that you are talking about, or for every topic could potentially be problematic.
Yeah, because then we run the risk of it looking like it's not content neutral anymore, right?
Correct.
That we're allowing speech in some cases, but not others, based on how we feel.
And to look at consistency, I think, you know, for work sessions, there's opportunity to submit written comment in advance of the work session, but you would almost have to set up the same type of public comment period at the beginning of the work session agendas to accommodate that, if you wanted to do that.
This really isn't public comment that we're talking about, though. I mean, I guess it is technically, but we're really talking about specific to a topic, expert, you know, information. I mean, I can think of several occasions where someone was here specifically, and we needed their input, because they actually had knowledge about the topic. I can think of it, we, when we're dealing with some of the mobile home issues at one point, or rentals, when we had Todd Monahan, who we invited up to speak on the topic because he had expertise in the topic.
Well, also, I would say, too, though, is, does everybody, that doesn't, if it, take, take the zoning classification, does everybody know that they would have opportunity to comment or weigh in on it one side or the other of the issue as expert? You know, that, that's the challenge you run, is how do you, somebody shows up, how do you make it consistent and opportunity for everybody involved?
Well, I know, but in, in practice, like, I, I'm struggling with this one a little bit, because to say we can't do that going forward, oh, sorry, you have pertinent information that we really need to help make a decision, but I can't ask you for it, doesn't seem quite right.
Well, and to hit me on the work session topic, you also, a lot of, a lot of processes coming forward, or a few processes coming over, have a lot of already public engagement that's been done, that has, has on the record as some community feedback. There is also opportunity to have, you know, bring in panels for information. There've been those situations in the past. I think just what we're trying to say is a caution to council is, once you start opening up that, that, that panel box, where do you, how do you make sure that there's consistent opportunity, equal and consistent opportunity?
I, I understand that, but those 12 times, maybe we've done it over the past 15, 14 years, whereas 15 years I've been on council, have been really important conversations that have helped the council make a decision, so.
In a work session, if we had such an expert who could contribute, could they be considered a presenter and kind of get around the, the public comment piece? And I'm, I guess I'm asking Shannon and-
Or Dave.
And our attorney.
There, a presenter category?
There, in the, in the past, there have been certain topics that we have brought in, industry experts or those type of things as presenters as part of that, that, that presentation. It doesn't happen very often, because a lot of times your staff is developing that information, talking as individuals, and bringing everything forward. So that's the other piece of it, too, is how much information you need in addition to your op, to staff in terms of weighing these decisions.
So, so public comment at a council meeting is usually on topics not on agenda, right? And at the work session-
Yeah, that's changed.
It can be, it can be topics on or off the agenda.
But what I was getting at is the work session is typically on that agenda item specifically if there's someone.
The only exception about the public comment, whether it's on or off the agenda, if it's a public hearing associated, then that comment's reserved for that public hearing that's scheduled for the agenda.
Councilmember Vasquez, I think I heard a second part of the question that you asked was also about the in-time calling of individuals within just the regular meetings for public comment. So I do want to make sure to address too what the thought process was on the edits of having it be signing up prior to the start of the meeting. And that was to be consistent, again, with our pre-registration for our remote attendees to say both of them have a determined point in time where you have to be on the list. So we're being consistent with people who are in person and then people who are being remote.
Well, why don't you keep going and think about this?
Okay. Well, the policy also prohibits a few items, and Rick just went over this last one. That would be topics with specific public hearings or related to potential quasi-judicial matters. Presentations, recordings, or props. So this could be trying to start to show something on a TV screen or playing a tape deck or something to that effect. It specifically says that banners and signs on the back of the wall are okay as long as they don't impede the business of the council to continue to do its work. Disruptions and interruptions are not allowed and that any specific threats of violence targeted against a person or a group with a reasonable fear of harm to the person or property or sexual harassment would be prohibited. Public hearings, the way we've designed this is very similar to everything I just went over with public comments, with the exception of a couple of additions. In public hearings, the presiding officer could separate commenters into groups favoring or groups opposing. That doesn't mean that that is necessarily how groups will be called, but just to get a good sense of making sure that all perspectives are provided time to provide public comment. Similarly to our public comment, they'd have to provide their name and city of residence or connection to the city. But presumably, since they are signing up for a public hearing on a specific item, that would be the topic that they are discussing. And so we don't have language in there specific to the topic. The items discussed though would have to be on those public hearing topics and they would be limited to three minutes.
I had a question. So if they have a disagreeable item displayed in the background, is that something that we're going to let them know prior to that, hey, you know, if you, do you want to speak and do public speaking? That you're going to need to remove that or you're going to need to go to another room? Or how do we, how do we tell them that what you have in the background is competing or disruptive to our meeting?
So if it's disruptive, as in it's actually impeding what you are doing? So let's say, for example, somebody brought in a giant 3,000 lumen sign, right? And it's blinding everybody who's up here and they can't consider to do their work. That could be something where you have them remove that particular sign. If it's based on content, that is a different story. And it would have to be, again, going back to what the prohibited items are, it would have to be a very specific threat of harm against a group or a person with the ability to think that that harm might come to fruition. So similar to our advisory board policy, we've also modeled our advisory board hand, or excuse me, our council policies and procedures. We've also added very similar language for our advisory board handbook. So it updates the language for public comments and public hearings, just like we went over through this presentation. We also added some additional resources for our presiding officers of those meetings, including a script for starting public comments to go over kind of what the rules are and what the roles and the responsibilities are, providing some notes on public comment for bodies as well as staff to know. So again, kind of going over what is the rules, what are allowed, what could be considered a meeting disruption, et cetera. And then we also provided some additional materials for if a meeting disruption or interruption actually occurs, what those advisory bodies could do. And these are all included as the appendix within the advisory board handbook. They're just tools and resources to use should something happen at a meeting. We also added some updated language just for accessibility and updated some of the information to be reflective of accurate board information. For example, there were still references to the Board of Park Commissioners. And so we wanted to make sure that we were reflective of what was currently in practice here at the city. And then we also clarified some language on city emails now that all of our permanent advisory boards receive city emails. So I know we've gone through a lot of questions and it sounds like there might still be some discussion that needs to occur. But I just wanted to repeat that the recommendation here is recommendation is for option one and that would be to proceed with adopting the two resolutions presented here tonight.
Councilmember?
So it's, it's not, well, I mean, it's doable, right? It's not uncommon or even common to have councils vote in a majority to go against policy and procedures, right? I mean, so I mean, we can do whatever we want, right? If we have a majority.
So I think my, after listening to this discussion, I think what we can do is go ahead and adopt this. But talking to the city manager, we could bring up the, have some more discussion at a future work session about what we do about this issue at work sessions. And so if we can do it either way.
Yeah, I'm not personally comfortable with that option. I like option three, which is to provide some direction to staff to come back to us again. I think we need to figure out how we deal with that situation that we've been discussing at a work session where there's someone whose input we want as part of the conversation because it's necessary information. And I think we have to figure out how we do that. And I think we could then come back to this for a vote. I'm not comfortable voting for it, as is.
Councilmember?
One of the things I'm really struggling with is that staff are trying to provide us with bumpers essentially. This is protective, right, to help us understand how we can continue to receive public comment and be as transparent as possible while being standardized and fair. And every time we make a change to this proposed language, we're taking on the responsibility to maintain that fairness. Because if we start diverging from this recommended advice, you know, if we open it up and say, well, actually, just this one time, we're going to extend. Or just this one time, we're going to let you speak even though the policy says we don't. We create risk because we're no longer being consistent. So like, this is great advice for us to have a very standard approach. And we can do whatever we want. But when we do that, we diverge from that standardization. And so it is a little bit of a risk for us to continue being accessible.
Well, I agree, but we've had it in our policies and procedures before that the mayor may ask, right? And so we are only talking about changing that right now. So that has been policy for, you know, since at least 2013, when this went into effect. We're talking about changing that policy and that's where I'm struggling with. It doesn't happen very often, but to see someone who comes to a work session and we're struggling to make a decision and that person may have pertinent information that helps us, I'm sorry, I can't talk to you. I mean, doesn't feel like good public policy either. So, I mean.
And right now, it's at the discretion of the mayor, right? We say, hey, Mayor Ryder, maybe we have this person's.
With consent of the council, right?
I feel better if there's a majority, we could take official action and vote and we have.
That's how, that's how it's always worked. I've always asked the council.
We could have been more official. You have always asked, but we've never like taken a formal vote, right? If it makes people more comfortable, we could do, we could actually take a motion.
I have no problem with that whatsoever.
I just think we have to find, there's got to be, I totally understand what you're trying to do. It's for our protection, but I just think we have to find a way to still be able to get that information that we need in making our decisions, whatever that is.
I think whether we pass this or not, we're still going to have to come back and address that. So if we're going to have to come back and address that, we might as well do it all in one, you know, later on.
So what's the, do you have a language in front of you that?
Well, I had two things actually that I wanted to maybe talk about before we try to do anything. But I did notice that the language in 7.07 on page 70 of the Red Line document, where it talks about if several people want to speak on the same topic, we can ask they all speak together. It does kind of conflict with the language above that says that we would take people in the order they're signed up. So I don't know that that's necessarily beneficial for us to say, okay, you're all here for the same thing, we're going to limit your time. I think we can just say we have 30 minutes for public comment and let people speak in the order that they signed in. And if everybody on that one topic takes up all the time, then they take up all the time. And then we have the option to extend if we have time on the agenda or not. So I was going to propose that we strike the first paragraph in number four on page 70 in section 707, which begins if several people, and then it goes through for X topic. But retain the second paragraph in number four and incorporate additionally the language that would allow the mayor to recognize people who were not registered. So kind of putting that language back in, that discretion. And to add, provided there is time, the mayor with support of the council may offer the opportunity for members of the public that did not pre-register or sign in to provide public comment.
Which has been our practice so far.
Is there anyone else who would like to?
So councilmembers, it sounds like we've got some more pencil sharpening to do and to take a look at this and bring back. And so what I heard was to take a look specifically at the regular meeting public comment and the language regarding time limitations and allowing for individuals who didn't sign up to have the opportunity provided the full consent of the body. In addition to that, it sounded like this body also wants us to take a look at work sessions and what potentials and possibilities there are specific to allowing individuals who may be connected to agenda items to have opportunities to provide feedback to the council.
Yeah. And also, while you're at it, as the technology allows to put into policy that at three minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off, so it's actually a policy. I know we, I know we need work on the technology, but it'd be nice to actually have that in the policy.
And we can make reference to that in the policy.
I almost feel like our pants are down right now in that we need, we should take some action on this at least, you know.
Right now, it's the way the policy's always been. So we have some time to change it, right? And so I do recommend that at this point, maybe we don't take action and then let's work on this a little bit more and come back. And hopefully, now that you've received some, a little more direction, I think you have a better idea of where we're trying to get to.
Sounds good. Council, we'll be back in front of you at a future date. And it sounds like we'll go with option three and we've gotten some great feedback, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay. Well, then, next up is the mayor's report. And under the mayor's report, there's an action item to appoint Whitney Godby to the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District. And I'm not sure if you noticed or didn't notice, but you don't have any applications in your packet. And so actually, I want to explain why you don't. And I'm going to turn it over to our clerk to explain why this is different than every other appointment I've made.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, that is correct. There's four members of the CARPFD board that shall be appointed by specific RCW. And that RCW outlines the four appointments shall be based by recommendations from local organizations. So no packet application material is actually received. It's all by recommendation from a local organization that meets the criteria in the RCW.
And so through that normal practice, we received a recommendation from the South Sound YMCA. I got one letter with a recommendation for this board. The time passed, there was no other recommendations. And so since I received the one recommendation and it looked like to, you know, qualified, that's why it's on the agenda today. And so I know it was a little bit different. Usually you get an application packet and, you know, I just wanted to explain why you didn't receive one, this one, it's just a little bit different. So with that, it is my motion to appoint Whitney Godby to fill an expiring, let's see, let me keep this right. That it's my motion to appoint Whitney Godby as the City of Lacey representative to the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District Board for the remainder of an unexpired term ending on March 1st, 2027.
Second.
Moving seconded, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have appointed Whitney. And then I'll turn it over to the city manager for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. We have a couple of items for action on the city manager's report. And the first one, well, it's not for action, but for informational purposes. As you are aware, we're getting ready to start our budget season. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to have our finance director, Troy Wu, inform council of the budget calendar. So Troy?
Thank you, city manager. This is a really good opportunity to provide the more significant activities of the budget as we go forward, both for the purposes of the city council and the public. One of my favorite definitions of budgeting is budgeting is the process of planning the future of our communities. So of course, public engagement is certainly critical to that. I will provide just a very brief outlook for the budget, but we'll really focus on the dates and significant activities of the council. So here's a little excerpt from the, what we call the budget call. This is a memorandum that's sent out to the organization by the city manager and the finance director. You do have that memorandum in your packet, but this really kind of sums everything up. As you know, economic data is backwards looking. So usually by the time I relay economic information to you, it's already outdated. The good news here is I think the direction of the economy's changed about three times. So this is still valid even a month later. So we are still looking at higher inflation than the Federal Reserve wants to see. In fact, they, well, they didn't act last week, they kept rates exactly where they're at. The language behind that is that inflation has not made the progress that they think it should. So we're going to see higher rates, at least till the next meeting. Right now, the expectation is for one rate increase at the end of 2024. That has kind of changed back and forth over the last few weeks. I've seen as high as three rate increases being projected, down to zero. Now it's back to one, so that's where we've gone kind of back and forth. We do know that, or we certainly expect that labor will be a significant issue for the city's budget, especially the general fund. High inflation, we've still experiencing here locally. That has a direct correlation to what we do for cost of living adjustments for employees. So this is a budget that is likely to focus on sustainability versus new programs. But we'll, you know, certainly evaluate those as the economic picture becomes more clear. So going into the significant activities of the council from about the end of summer to the end of the year, August 27th is a, will be a briefing of the final 2024 budget amendments. The council will hopefully consider that ordinance at the first meeting in September. September 10th, we plan to bring a, an estimate of revenues and expenditures for 2025. It's possible this may blend into the September 24th activity, which is the 2025 budget workshop. Really kind of just depends on where we're at in terms of balancing our budget. But as you know, the workshop is a relatively new process, at least in the history of Lacey. Probably about 14, 13 or 14 years, we've come to council early in the budget process to make sure we're on the same page with staff, make sure that the priorities match up. So we actually put together and present the budget that matches your priorities and the needs of the community. Continuing on to October, October 15th is when we are scheduled to have the city manager budget presentation. November 19th, the council will consider the 2025 property tax ordinance and the accompanying resolution. And then we are scheduled at this point to adopt the budget on December 17th. I did want to highlight separately three public hearings. This is really where we hope to seek that public engagement in our budget process. We are required by law to conduct three different hearings. The first will be on November 5th. This is called our revenue hearing. Really, the focus here is on property tax, but we do a pretty good comprehensive review of all revenues for the 2025 year. The first general budget hearing is scheduled for November 19th, the final hearing on December 3rd. So again, this is really where we would appreciate and hope to hear. really where we would appreciate and hope to hear from the public in terms of this guiding document for the city. So those are the main activities we have scheduled for the budget. Of course, there's lots of work that goes behind the budget, but these are the most public facing portions of our budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
So I've been, I've been talking about this for many years, and we've sort of done it in the past, maybe a couple of times. But obviously, our city budgets are very complicated. Property taxes are very complicated. And the general public really doesn't necessarily have a good understanding of sort of how city budgets work, how they're created, especially on the property tax side. And we've, we've, we've reached out before and to the treasurer, county treasurer, and the county assessor to sort of ask them if they've been willing to do some public workshops that we, that are part of our presentation that we do. It worked out a little bit during COVID because everything's online. We just went to them online. But we haven't been consistent about doing this every year. And I think it's really important because, you know, this is really complicated. It's so different than how the public handles their finances. It's so different from how a business owner does their finances. It just, it's, it's a very unique. And I think the, the more we can consist, consistently educate the public on how the sausage is made, so to speak, I think it's, I think we have a better, we're better equipped to, to talk to them about when we have to make more difficult decisions, or when we need to look at raising revenue, or if, so on, so forth. And so I, I would really like to get back into the practice of sort of doing this budgeting 101, and, and property taxes 101, and, and, and sort of explaining this to as, you know, like a fifth grade level, if possible, to the public on, on the most important document, the most important thing we do as a council, which is adopt our budget, right? It's the most important thing we do because it tells you our values. It tells you everything you need to know about cities. You can find it in the budget. But it's so complicated that it's, you know, I just would like some more education, forward-facing education.
I can just get some clarification a little bit, too, and just kind of what, what that format is. Are you looking at scheduling a specific council work session or council meeting to have this presentation? Or are you looking at other avenues to try to inform the public, where we could do special videos?
What we would, what we, I've attempted to do in the past is even before you do the city manager budget presentation, so kind of right around the city council budget workshop timeframe, that's when we ask whether it's a work session or a city council meeting. I think in some cases, a city council meeting makes more sense under presentations for the assessor and the treasurer to give a quick presentation. Maybe it's on back-to-back meetings, or however we want to figure that out. And then, as we're doing the, the budget workshop, we actually have spent some time trying to explain what we're trying to do and how, how we budget. And that would have to come, that would come from you, Troy. So I'm putting more work on your, on your shoulders there. But I just think this is one of, so important. And it's so complicated, which means we need lots of education.
Well, I wrote some notes down, and we could take a look at how we can incorporate some type of informational purposes, like say budget 101 type of thing, and break it up in smaller segments for the benefit of the public and build that into our, our, our schedule.
And trust me, I've talked to the assessor and the treasurer, and both of them said we'd love to be able to explain what, what we do to the public because the public just doesn't know and understand. And so I think you'll have receptive ears from those two county electeds.
And, yes, sorry.
So I was just going to say along the lines of things that a lot of people don't understand about why we have high interest rates in the first place. And it's because they actually don't want us spending money. They don't want people spending money. They want companies spending money. And one of the main things they look at is unemployment rate. They actually want the unemployment rate to go up before they bring rates down. And so
It's very complicated, what the Fed does, too. I mean, that's, that's a really difficult conversation. I'm not saying let's get into the Fed, what their decision-making is. But I think when it comes to our specific budget, right, I, I think we can do a better job of sort of explaining sort of our limitations and how we do it. And then really, the things that are out of our control, right, which is the assessment and everything else. Property tax is just one of those really difficult things. And people just don't understand how they work.
Well, what I was actually getting at was that even when they do, do start dropping rates, it actually means there's less jobs out there and people are spending less money. So economically, we're in a worse position. So that's why, the point I was trying to make is I think being financially conservative, you know, going into next year is, is the right decision.
Sure.
So that's the main, main point I was trying to
Sure. And I, yeah, I would understand this one.
I don't remember when, but maybe three, four years ago, do something like, but it wasn't done in the council meeting. As I recall, it was more of, um,
It was during COVID. And so it was all Zoom. And because we were doing everything Zoom. So it was a lot, sort of easier at the time. We just went to a, and what we did then was, I thought was very kind of helpful, was we, we did these public presentations on lots of different topics, right? It wasn't just this, we just made this one of the topics that we talked about. And so
Conversations with the council was the
Conversations with council. That's exactly right.
And there's, there's lots of different vehicles that we can use. We can use council meetings and have presentations in front of council that hopefully the public picks up. We can also put information on our website. We do have information on our website about budgeting 101, some videos that are produced, as well as we can also do some outreach and try to get information out to the public. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, we want to try to make sure people in the community understand our budgeting process as, as the mayor have said, and that they know how they can be engaged. Challenges is trying to reach them to know, that they know what this process is going on, too. So.
So does that?
Oh, that's a fair question.
Go ahead.
You know, the more I listen to this, the more it, it seems it would be a great thing for the assessor and the treasurer to do this on, on a county-wide. I mean, there are people in other jurisdictions who could benefit from this, too. So if we could help them develop something that could be shared county-wide, I think it'd be great.
Yeah. I, I think, I think once they have the presentation down, it's really easy for them to sort of do a roadshow. And I, I think, like I said, I think my conversations with them, they're willing to do it. I'm just saying, let's see if we can fit into this budget calendar and see if we can put some more information in there. Okay? I'm not sure if we need an official motion to do that.
Nope, we'll make it work.
So is there a, I don't need a motion to, no action.
Next, I can, no action on that. So the next item does have an action. It is a Public Works Award for the Pacific Homewood Roundabout Improvements and Sharrow Route Striping. I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Scott Agar, to provide some information to the council on the project.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and council. Staff respectfully recommends approval of contract PW 2024-12 to active construction. The amount of the contract is $634,634.00, which is really close to the engineer's estimate, which was $600,000. There were six bidders on this project. There are 25 working days, and work is anticipated to begin in July. Essentially, there's two main items of work on this contract. We're marking about three and a half miles of routes with sharrows, which are share the road markers for, for bicyclists. You can see on the map there, there's a north-south leg. I know it's too small to read roads, but that's Golf Club Road from I-5 to about 22nd Avenue. And then there's an east-west leg that runs from the West City Limits along 21st, 22nd, Meanders over to Shady Lane, and then to Carpenter. Just a bit of a peek at the roundabout itself. It's, the roundabout work is a grind overlay, and, and this pretty much shows the limits. It's just the roundabout itself at, at Homewood and Pacific, and, and the short approaches as well. However, there is a, a north-south leg, a long homin from the roundabout south down to 13th. The roundabout will just be a grind inlay. So we'll grind out two and a half inches asphalt and, and pave back, inlay back, two and a half inches fiber-reinforced asphalt. The homin leg will be a complete reconstruction. We'll remove all the asphalt and place new subgrade and, and asphalt as well. So one last slide, just to show you, this is what a share the road marker or a sharrow looks like, just a bicycle with a couple of arrows. The map there on the left shows placement of those sharrows on 21st Avenue there between the Chalice Western Trail and around Slitter Kinney. And then there are also signs that go along with that. The signs, the little, there's an example of a sign there on the right-hand side of this slide. So again, that contract was $634,634. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
I would move to award Lacey contract number PW 2024-12 to low bidder active construction incorporated from Puyallup, Washington in the amount of $634,634.
Back up.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? How many working days?
In this one, it was short, only 25.
Does 22nd have sidewalk?
22nd Avenue, there's sections that do and sections that don't. Like, for example, between Riddle and College, there, there are not, there's not.
Thank you.
Will the roundabout be done one lane at a time, or will it be detoured?
I'm sure there'll be some detours there. Yeah. Just, I mean, you know how narrow it is going around there. By the time you get a paver in there, yeah, we'll, we'll have some detours. Yeah.
We just got to be careful there because the only detour is through old historic Lacey neighborhood. And if you start detouring them through the old historic Lacey neighborhood, they're going to come and kill me.
I understand.
I don't think it's funny. And so I just think we need to be careful there when we're thinking about that.
Yeah. I mean, there are times where we really don't have any options. So, yeah, we'll come up with the least impactful detours that we can. But I don't know exactly what those detours are at this moment.
I just wanted to mention six bidders and three of them within 40,000, under 40,000 of each other. So that's good competitive process.
Is there any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to make my life, no, no, no. It's maybe moved and seconded to award the Lacy's contract PW 2024-12 to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
All right.
Might have to.
The, the third item on the, on my report tonight, I want to invite Brandon McCausstrup, who's our Public Works Utility Engineer. He'll present the, the agreement that's being proposed between the City of Lacey and Olympia for our short-term use of wholesale water.
All right. Good evening, mayor, council. So tonight, I have a wholesale water agreement with the City of Olympia to purchase some water from them as we go through some construction projects in the near future. So this agreement would allow us to purchase up to 2 million gallons per day through an intertie we have with the City of Olympia. And it would run from 2024 to 2028, which is intended to get us through a construction sequence with our Madrona and Westside PH projects. And then we also have some tank rehab projects we want to get through. And the pricing for this agreement is based on, it's based on wholesale, wholesale pricing as opposed to retail pricing. So we had had a consultant come in, FCS Group. They, they're the same consultants that do our own rates and for City of Olympia. So they went through all the work for that to set equitable rates. They're actually less than what you would see for retail sales. It's actually pretty comparable to what it costs us to produce our own water. So it's a, it's a fair price. So here, you can kind of see where the, the need plays in a little bit. We've got a couple of construction projects. We've got the PH Adjustment Project, where we're going to basically provide treatment for six of our water production wells. And as that project's done, those wells are going to have to be taken offline at various stages of the project. There's going to be a lot of pump retrofits, electric controls, a lot of work to be done there. And, you know, as far as construction sequencing goes, we can try and do our best, but you never really know how things are going to turn out. Sometimes things take longer. Sometimes parts don't show up. So, so we're trying to make sure we're covered in the event that, you know, we're in the summer and something just isn't ready to run. Another project that we're kind of keeping our eye on is the Hoxbury Tank Rehabilitation. So that tank needs to be taken offline, drained, coated. There's some structural repairs that we need to do there. And that's a significant storage reservoir for us. That's roughly three and a half million gallons of live storage. So when that tank is off, we want to make sure that we've got enough sources ready to run so that we don't let our storage tanks get too low. And there on the bottom, you can kind of see the timeline there of when we think construction is going to take for these projects. And then the term of the wholesale water agreement is kind of, we're trying to right-size it for just that construction window. So here you can kind of see, as we go through construction, you know, if we have, let's say, one well at each of the wellfields off during the summer, that impact is kind of shown in the orange there on the left. It reduces our total production capacity. The middle bar there is about what we would anticipate for our peak summer demand, about 16 million gallons a day. So, you know, if we're in a situation where you have two wells off and it's a hot day, we're going to be right on the edge of being able to keep up. So the far right line just shows this is where we get back up to if we add this water from Olympia. So we're, we're in effect buying some insurance and making sure that we can stay ahead of anticipated demand. And about two weeks ago, you heard about the Water Shortage Response Plan. I think Charlene presented that and explained how that works. So, so what we're trying to do is avoid having to implement that if we can. So with that, staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Olympia that allows us to purchase up to 2 million gallons of water a day for a term of four years.
You want to start with questions, or do you want to put in motion?
Do you want me to put motion first? I can do that. I would move to authorize the city manager to execute the water supply agreement between the Cities of Lacey and Olympia.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Let's have some discussion. That's my record.
Just one question. So I get that the, you know, it's a fair price, it sounds like, for the water. If we don't use any water, there's no cost at all? So it's only water we use, right? There's no, like, base cost?
No, there is a monthly ready-to-serve charge, which is, yeah, it's about $12,700 a month, I believe. So that's, what that is, is that's in lieu of a connection fee. Like, you know, like if we took on a new customer, we would have to charge them a GFC that they're buying into the system. We're not doing that here. So the ready-to-serve charge is more like a rental fee in lieu of a connection fee.
Was that close to what we were paying before? Do you remember what we were paying before, when we had the intertie? That's, because it seems, it seems a little high, but.
The, the previous agreement, which I, I believe we canceled that one
Yes, we canceled.
2016-ish.
Ish.
It was around that area. That one had a higher consumption price.
Rate, yes.
So the, the usage price was higher.
Yes.
But I believe the ready-to-serve price was lower.
Yeah. And so I guess the big question is, how often do you think we're gonna be tapping into this?
During these projects, we will use it fairly regularly.
Okay. And then I noticed that we're also having to pay for a new meter to be installed?
Yes, if, we've calibrated the meter. I think it looks like it's in good shape and I think Olympia's guys felt like it was in good shape. But if, if there's any questions about the meter, then we are on the hook to replace the meter just to make sure that it's.
I thought this agreement says that we shall, we are, we are going to replace the meter.
That is the intent, but. If they, they're gonna inspect it and if they feel that it's good as is, then.
I, I didn't see that we had, it says, it says, um, that all water we drive by Olympia to Lacey through a, a new meter owned by Olympia. So like we are going to do a new meter. It's gonna be up to, you know, it won't exceed $5,000. Here's using, then we'll say, we're just gonna be using the existing meter until we get the new one, as long as it's calibrated right. But it sounds like we are gonna be buying a new meter here.
Yeah, that is part of the agreement.
Oh, yes, we're prepared to buy and install a new meter. That is what the agreement says. But yeah, I mean, as long as it's working fine and Olympia's in agreement, we'll just hold off on that.
Okay. We don't need language.
As long as they're, you know, I mean, that, that's their call.
Sure. It just didn't seem like we have that flexibility in this agreement. It sounds like we will be buying the new meter.
Yeah, I guess, but it's their option to give us that flexibility.
Okay.
I mean, we can go out and buy one and set it on the side.
Well, no.
We're more than happy to do that.
I'm just saying, like, it'd be, if, if we're looking for some flexibility, it'd be nice if, if it actually was in the agreement. You know, but go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, you know, before the, you guys were talking that we had to have, we've exercised these agreements before. Other jurisdictions, jurisdictions have as well. We'll probably do it in the future. We might even wind up helping them one day. I'm sure we've done it before. So it's a good thing. And so this is where partnerships help for the greater good, you know? Cause if we have to implement that emergency plan, it's like we spoke for the last couple of months. It's, everybody suffers. And talk about higher rates, this is peanuts compare, in comparison.
Any other discussion? It also talks about if we go over the 2 million, then we're gonna have to start, we're gonna be charged retail rates. And then if they tell us we're, if we're consistently going over 2 million, they can just automatically cancel this agreement. Do you, do you see the possibility that we'll go over 2 million gallons?
No, we have the ability to program the, it's run through a pump station. So we have the ability to program the pump station to just shut off at that daily flow amount.
Okay. That's good to know.
The pumps will just turn off.
That's good to know.
So this is a 48-month agreement?
It is four years with, with one year potential extension.
All right, so our minimum commitment is about 613, 615?
And when do you, when's the first project?
The, the first big project is the Madrona Westside PH Adjustment, which, which they're starting construction now.
Right now?
Yeah, this quarter.
I was just wondering about the timing on this. Like we, we definitely, we need to get this pretty soon so we can.
Yes.
Okay.
It, it won't be too much longer before the contractor is ready to start taking things apart and working on some of these.
We might need some of that water. Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Just thank you Olympia.
Yeah.
And it's awesome that they do this for us. But you know, I know we'd do the same thing if we could, so.
Okay, well, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the city manager to execute the water supply agreement between the Cities of Lacey and Olympia. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Another item for action tonight is related to our Community Development Block Grant entitlement status. We have a timeframe to exercise our, the City of Lacey's ability to become an entitlement community under a Community Development Block Grant. And of course, council might be aware that we've been participating in a county-wide consortium for the, the previous three years. That consists of Tom Honor, the County and South County Communities. However, when we entered that consortium three years ago, the council gave direction to start preparing the groundwork for taking this action today. And this is also a part of the council work program that was established in 2021. So with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle Chavez, who's, will be able to get more background information on this, uh, this program and that action requested of the council tonight.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. My name, name is Michelle Chavez and I am the Human Services Coordinator for the City of Lacey. Glad to be with you here tonight. I'm gonna go over some slides with you to talk about the Community Development Block Grant funding options. I have about five slides that are gonna talk about the background of the Community Development Block Grant Program and how we got to this decision-making point today. And then I've got about a few more slides to talk about the four options that were available to you in your packet. So the recommendation before you today is to accept status as an entitlement grantee and receive a direct annual formula allocation of CDBG funds, starting in federal fiscal year 2025. The motion is changed a tiny bit from when we originally published because we do have to send a notification if we do decide to take this action, to send a letter to HUD and Thurston County. The original motion just mentioned a letter to Thurston County, but we would need to notify the federal government as well as the county. So just wanted to make sure where that slight change. So a little bit of background about the Community Development Block Grant Program. So you have in your, in your packet, attachment one, which is a comprehensive background on all the different things about the Community Development Block Grants. It talks about national objectives, criteria, common activity, eligible activities, and the things that are ineligible. And I'm sure you're all very familiar with that, but just thought we'd include that in the packet as well. We also included a summary of all the Lacey projects that have been funded, a kind of a history over the past 10 years. What's on the slide here before you today is just the projects that were funded in 2023. So you can see a lot of worthwhile projects have been funded throughout our history of this inter-local agreement. So prior to 2021, Lacey did not qualify as a standalone CDBG entitlement community. And they became eligible in 2022 to become a entitlement community after Lacey reached the population of over 50,000 residents. So at the beginning of the inter-local agreement in 2022, Lacey could have opted to become an entitlement community, but did not because it did not feel that at that time it had the capacity to take that on. However, in the 2022, 2024 city work plan, it is listed in there as item number 13 to move towards creating a CDBG entitlement program and adopt the plan. And to look at how, taking CDBG funding directly 2025 forward. So just a little bit of background in terms of how we came to this point. We've been having discussions with Thurston County because Thurston County has to make a decision. They have to be recertified by the federal government every three years, how their inter-local agreements are gonna work with the local communities. And so we started having that conversation earlier this year and we talked to them about what are the options? And that's how those four options came to you today, as well as through HUD. They also agree that these are the options before us if, if we would like to continue. One of the things that we wanted to make sure is that if Lacey decided to go out on their own and become an entitlement community, would that wouldn't impact Thurston County's ability to maintain their status as an urban county? And we've checked multiple times with HUD and they would still retain their Thurston County urban status, urban county status. So we do have more capacity now. We have our ad hoc human services work groups stood up. We have myself in place, which I am working on, as you all know, the Human Services Grant Program. We're rolling that out coming up. We're gonna be launching applications later this month for that. And so this would dovetail nicely with what we're, the work we're already doing with that program and the different activities we're undertaking establishing that. Our staff and work group could also take recommendations on the CDBG applications and make recommendations to council going forward. And we would work with Thurston County and HUD to make sure that all the regulations are required, are met. Required regulations are met and that all the administrative capacity is, works without a, without a hitch. So that's just a little bit about the background of how we came to this place, to this decision-making place that we are this evening. And I wanted to talk about, a little bit about the different options in your packet. So the first one is option one, and I realize that pros and cons are subjective. So what's a pro to me may be a con to somebody else, but I just tried to throw up some ideas out there for you to have before you to look at. So for option number one, to become a direct entitlement, that's the part that's in the city's work plan. The pros are that you would get a direct allocation of 304,000 per year. So right now you get an allocation every three years by the inter-local, inter-local agreement. You would have more local control. You would have an automatic allocation if there was a national emergency. So one of the things that happened with the COVID pandemic is that entitlement communities who already got their funding through the formula directly, were automatically allocated an additional CARES Act allocation. And oftentimes it was more or twice as much as what you would get for your standard annual allocation. We would be able to join different national and local professional associations if we were to become entitlement. So we would have a lot of more access to resources nationally and better connections to peers that work in this field. Have a direct relationship with, to HUD. We would have a home consortium with Thurston County and Olympia. And we would kind of mirror more to what Olympia is doing with setting up our, the consolidated plans and doing all the collaboration with the county in terms of the fair housing assessment. It could increase the public awareness of the Lacey CDBG program. I think sometimes it kind of gets lost because it's, at, at the county level, we don't get as much PR as far as what we're doing. And so we try to bring that more to the forefront, that this is a Lacey program. And up to 20% of the allocation goes to, would go to Lacey. Right now it goes to the county. The cons for option one are that Lacey would take on all the administrative responsibility. And so right now the county does all of that for us. This is listed in front of you, but it's, it's quite a bit. When you take on federal funds directly, you're taking on a lot of reporting requirements. You have a lot of environmental reviews you'd have to do, fair housing assessments and things like that. So I'm not gonna go through each one, but yes, councilmember.
Just a quick question. If you, backing up, are we doing some of these things every three years? Or is this basically the 20% service charge that we're paying the county for is that they're doing all of those reporting and environmental reviews? So we don't do them every third year when it's our turn, the county always does them. So we'll be taking that on? Okay.
Correct. And another con is that it's a new funding, it would be a new funding cycle and a new application process for our agencies in the community who may already be familiar with the county's three-year process. So that would be a change. Funding option number two is entitlement through a joint agreement. So this is not a very common type of situation, but it does occur in other communities. I talked to King County and about how they're, theirs worked. And that would be kind of a hybrid entitlement status where that Lacey would have a joint agreement with the county to get their allocation annually, but more of the administrative burden would be on the county. And we can negotiate how, who wants to take on what pieces of the administration. So again, would be an annual allocation instead of a three-year allocation. We could negotiate who's doing which parts of the administrative burden. We could have access to national and local professional associations and we would be in a home consortium with the county and Olympia. The cons again is no direct relationship with HUD, not as much local control, no direct admin dollars. We would have to do some substantial amendments to our plan that we already have with the county. We would have less public awareness of our CDBG program and there would be a new funding cycle. So that, again, that would require some learning, a learning curve on our community members. Option three is maintain the status that we have right now and defer in direct entitlement and then stay in the consortium from 2025 to 2027. And the pros would be in 2026, we'd get an allocation of approximately 1 million. Again, similar to what has been happening through the inter-local agreement. The administrative responsibility would be with the county and qualifying agencies are familiar with that process. The cons are again, local control, annual allocation, we wouldn't get that, we would go to the three-year cycle. We would not receive the direct admin dollars and we would not have as much input on our five-year consolidated plan as well as less awareness to the community. And that opportunity would not be available to us to join the national groups that have direct entitlement status. And then the last option, option four, is to participate through the state CDBG program, which is what Lacey did before. They got into this inter-local agreement with the county. And that's a competitive process and we do not recommend this option because we would, right now we're guaranteed if we stay with the inter-local agreement or we become a direct entitlement, we're guaranteed some kind of dollars through CDBG. If we were to go into the competitive route, we're not guaranteed. So pros and cons are, again, it's, it's hard to say there's a lot of pros for this, but there could be less of an administrative burden if it was that, for that project. But again, we wouldn't, we're not guaranteed through the formula. So our recommendation again is to accept status as an entitlement community. Direct annual allocation of CDBG funds, starting in the federal fiscal year, fiscal year of 2025. A motion to proceed with Mayor Andy Ryder signing a letter to HUD declaring the city's intent to proceed as a CDBG entitlement grantee.
I would move to proceed with Mayor Andy Ryder signing letters to HUD in Thurston County declaring the city's intent to proceed as a CDBG entitlement grantee and to not participate in Thurston County's CBDG program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
On the administrative side, 20% has always kind of bothered me. Could the city maybe take a little less than that?
Yeah, so I, I think that is, um, there's, this is gonna be a first step. There's a little bit more work to do after we give notice of us going on our own. We will need to have a, you know, when we decided, do we want an ad hoc committee again, going through applications and doing all this stuff? Do we want to do it ourselves? We've done it ourselves in the past. But we need to come up with a, a process that's published and everyone knows what to do. There's, so there is a lot, there's more work that needs to be done. This is just basically starting that process. And then staff will have to come back and we'll have a little more discussions before we ever go out to our first call for, call for projects.
Cause the 20% is max.
It's max.
Doesn't mean that's the number we have to use, we can use something lower.
Cause I, it's, it has always bothered me as well that the county took 20%.
Just kind of add on and clarify too, that's one of the things that the council can look at. What is that amount of admin dollars and go to staff and how much goes out in the community? And there is, the mayor is correct, there is some work that needs to be done between now and the end of the year. However, on the funding cycles, we, as the council was aware, we just recently set up the Human Services Work Group Council to do our human services fund. And there's a model that's being put in place this year that can also be that vehicle for community development block grant dollars.
If we decide that's what we want to do. So we still have some decisions we want to make and need to make.
Well, and I, I don't want us to overlook that now we will have a lot of the administrative burden as well. And so I, I'm with you. I want more money to go to the nonprofits that are doing this good work. But if we're gonna have to be doing all of those reports and those reviews and like that additional compliance stuff, I also want to make sure that we're adequately funded to do that work, cause we're gonna be doing it ourselves.
I, I definitely think we need to have some conversations about how many hours we, we think staff is gonna be spending on this and then making sure that we are covering staff hours, right? And so there, that will need to be a report that comes back to us before we make a decision on, on the 20%. You know, really. You know, really, we had four options presented to us today, but there's really only two options that we could decide on, right? Whether we go on our own, or we, we extend the, the agreement. Option two of renegotiating and with Olympia and Thurston County and coming up with a different formula, I think maybe had some merit, but it's way too late to be, to do that because we have to give notice here by July 4th or July 3rd, and it's coming up here pretty quick. And so, it's either we continue the way it's always been, or we go out on our own. I do, this is going to be a huge change, not only for us, but for our partners, right? And so, I, I think it's something that we have to make decisions on what's best for the city of Lacey. I think this is what's best for our community to have the entitlement community and have funds available every single year instead of every third year. But it's going to disrupt the other partners. They know that we've been discussing this for a while, but I do, I mean, I was just in the mayor's forum, and I think there is a little consternation about Lacey, you know, feel like we're taking our, our goodies and heading home on our own. So, I just wanted to say there, you know, there, there may be a little disruption there, and so we need to be aware of that. But I, I do think we've been talking about this, at least at the leadership level, for quite a while, so I don't think the county and the other partners are completely caught off guard. Because even before last time, we were like, eh, I don't know if this makes sense for us to do this, but since we've been in this partnership, let's try to continue the partnership, make it work one more time. But we, even back in 2021, we said that this is probably going to be the last time. We probably should have had a check-in prior to this council meeting about the status and about what our plan is, but, because now we're up against deadline and we have to make a decision. And so we don't, we don't have really any opportunities for any flexibility, but...
I want to talk about it, this isn't the first time we've discussed it.
Sure. But it's the first time some council members know anything about this. So, anyway, it, it is what it is, we're, we're here. I think the rest of the county, I think the county knows we're going to be making a decision, and the town auditor and the South County knows that they're going to have to come up with a brand-new agreement, right? Because we're getting out of this old agreement. But I, again, I think this is what's best for Lacey, and that's why I'll, I'll be sworting it. It, it's growing pains too. We're not, we're not a small city anymore, you know? The, the public broadcasting thing didn't work for everybody, and they, everybody did a different implementation of that, you know? So, this is just, you know, we're, we're bigger now, and we're going through some growing pains, and, you know, one, one size doesn't fit all anymore. And I just, I think it's, it's a good move. Is there any other discussion?
I do.
Go ahead.
So, CDBG, CDBG funds are per capita?
There's a formula that takes into a lot of different elements, demographic elements in the community. I don't know all of the formulaic elements right offhand, but Shannon can...
Yeah.
There's two different formulas. There's a Formula A and a Formula B, and like Michelle was just mentioning, population can be part of it, poverty rates can be part of it, housing stock can be part of it. And what the federal government does is they determine which formula a jurisdiction scores higher on, and they use that formula for the distribution of block grant dollars. But there is a Formula A and there is a Formula B, and they have different inputs.
Okay, so the reason why I ask is because in the presentation, it shows that our annual allocation HUD estimate of 304,850, our last allocation was a little over 1.2. And, and 20% of that, of course, went to the county, that was a little over 200, $240,000. So, my question is, will ours cover our costs?
I'm, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, for the $204,000 covering our costs, are you talking about administrative costs?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be different because it's a different percentage of our 304, not the million.
Right, and I get that part, and so that's why I'm asking. So even at that number, and that's why I want to know, is it per capita? Because if, or, or what the formula was, because as we grow, who knows, these, these, these numbers may increase, but as it is now, we'd be taking about a 25% cut from, from our last distribution if we go this route. And not that that's a determining factor, it, it...
We got that once every three years, we're getting this every year.
Which, I know.
That's the math is usually, it says three times three is nine.
Okay, three times three is nine? And one, and last time we got 1 point, almost 1.3. So that's, that's the, the rub in the situation. And that's why I was wondering, is, is this, this 304,850, what's the potential for that to grow?
There's a, yeah, it will grow as our population grows, but there's other things that take into account. You know, in the, I'll take a, one little step back. One of the reasons why we sort of were pausing a little bit is because we've done some sort of more analysis of, and I keep bringing this up all the time, is our, our urban growth area, right? I keep, you know, the urban growth area is, be the third largest city in Thurston County. Under what we've historically have done, it's also has a section of a, one of the higher pockets of lower-income housing and poverty, which has been, you know, would necessitate, or four CDBG dollars go into that part of that community. But under the old system, there's not been a single dollar, really, that's gone to our urban growth area. And so, we had some thought like, well, maybe let's talk to the county and see if we can somehow include the urban growth area and renegotiate. But that got really complicated, and it just, it didn't seem like we probably had enough time. But it does bring up a really good point, that once again, our urban growth area is sort of being neglected in the bigger scheme of things for service being, services being provided to them. And so, obviously, as we annex that area, the population will go up and all that will go in the city of Lacey, and, and will be, you know, this number would dramatically increase. But that's sort of the pros and cons as you're, as we're looking at how policy decisions are being affected, and how our urban growth area is being affected by policy decisions from the county and so on and so forth, so. Is there any other discussion? I just wanted to bring up one thing that, from a different angle, is, say, like our electrical inspectors, we, we could have the county or the state do it, right? But we have our own, and we, and we retain control that way, you know? So, us as a city, you know, we have more of a pulse on our inspection of our, you know, during permit inspections and stuff. So, that element of control is a good thing for the city to have, and we'd have more control of these dollars being spent in Lacey, for Lacey projects. And so it's, it's, it's a different angle, but it's something that you guys should consider. I know, yeah. I, I agree that, the thing about CDBG, these dollars in particular, is you can do a lot of different things with these dollars. And so, in some cases, we have, it's a more flexible use of federal dollars, sort of, it's so hard to spend federal dollars, and they, they usually have a lot of strings attached, and this does, this will have reporting requirements, and we're putting a lot of more, a lot more work on our employees, on city staff, like, a lot more. And so that has, it's a concern as well, it's like, can our city staff handle all this extra work they're going to have to do under this? However, we can help pay for that work because we can take some of this to pay, you know, some of these dollars can go to administration to help cover that if we need to hire someone else or a part-time person, or so on and so forth, but...
But there's money to go in the administration regardless.
Yeah. And so, but we, you know, there's a lot of cool things, you know, a lot of things we can do to help our community specifically for, because of these funds, that we just, we could only do it every, once every three years, and now we're going to be able to do it every year. And that gives us a lot of opportunities, and like I said, as we continue to grow, as we continue to annex, this, these dollar number will go up and up.
And the, that's kind of the reason why, either way, the annual disbursement is what I would lean towards because it creates wins in the community every single year and allows us to be more proactive on what are necessities at that time. You miss out on some funding, then you're waiting another three years, you know, to apply again. So this allows us to just continually do good things for the community, even if it's a little bit less right now. So it just creates a lot more flexibility.
Yeah, exactly. And, and we can think outside the box on how we want to do this too, and, and so, anyway. Is there any other discussion? Then, there's been a motion and a second to proceed with myself signing letters to HUD and Thurston County declaring the city's intent to proceed as a CDBG entitlement grantee and to not participate in the Urban County CDBG program. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and one last item I have on my report, as, as you are aware, we are, currently have an active construction project, the Carpenter Road, Britton Parkway Roundabout. We're at a, a point in, in that project where we're going to have to enact some road closures for the contractor to work on the center segment, so I asked our Public Works Director Scott Ayer to kind of give a highlight of the project and what the road restrictions will be looking like over the next couple of weeks.
All right, so at the Britton Carpenter Roundabout, we have a road closure. This message went out to all essential service providers and others, has been circulated. We've been, had variable message boards out advertising this closure since last week. You can see there that there, they're in red, which is immediately west of the roundabout, is the section that will be closed. So, to go into just a little bit more detail on why we're closing it, this, this section here shows the roundabout, you can see the sections, you know, after they will be built. The lanes that will be remained open are shown in red and blue. So, north is up, so traffic that's going north on Carpenter will be able to take a right and go to the east. Traffic that's coming from the east to the west on, on Britton Parkway that wants to go south on Carpenter can make that movement. There just won't be any movement going further west than the roundabout. The main reason for this is turning movements. The contractor is not able to get all their equipment in there, form things up, pour it, you know, labor, equipment, material supplies, and keep that open. So that'll be, that section will be closed for about three weeks. And we try our best to keep all the citizens and users informed. One way we do that is through project updates. So, these three screens, I apologize, it's kind of small, but just to step people through them, if you go to our main screen, up near the upper-left section is a trending topics. So if people clip, click on that, pull-down will come down, and one of the main items that's always on there is project updates. They can click on that, it'll bring up the center screen there that shows a map, and they can click on the little icon where the project is located, and it will take them to that third screen, which will give them information on the project, and they can scroll down, sign up for project updates, enter their email, and anytime there is a project update, they will be contacted via email. One way to skip a couple of those steps, that we, in the notifications, we're now starting to send out QR codes for the specific projects. So like, if you caught that QR code that's up there right now on your phone, it would go straight to the project page for the Britton Parkway Carpenter Roundabout. The construction team, Ashley Smith and, and her team work closely with Shannon's team in Public Affairs to utilize social media and other means of communicating to the public when these, you know, things come up. So, anyway, we just wanted to make you aware, there's, there is going to be a three-week closure.
What were the dates of that closure again?
It starts tomorrow, so it should be completed by about Friday, July 12th. So, any other questions?
And that, limit, there's a limitation on large trucks?
You know, I haven't been told, I've been told that that, that this movement here, if I can get back to it.
Oh, yeah, like, are you going to say, like, if a truck pulls up, you're like, go, turn around, but cars?
No, the movement, the turning movements there are not tight enough to where they should be restricted. That, as you, as you can see, even though it shows splitter islands in there, you can see both the red and the blue over the top, those aren't constructed yet, and that's not all that sharp of a turn, so.
So Miles and the other guys will be okay?
They should be, yeah.
But going through it and taking a left, that's when...
Correct, there'd be no left. I mean, go northbound, there would be no left.
No left, period. For cars, war.
It's a swooping turn. There's, there's no other option.
So there's no...
That area to the left that is closed off, so you, you know, the two Carpenter Road offsets, you won't be able to travel between the two Carpenter Road offsets.
Wow, that's again, that's a lot of traffic that turns left.
Right, right.
Goes down to 15th.
Just a...
Have to wait anymore.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we always are very sympathetic to the inconveniences we cause for these improvements, but, you know, we, we do look at all options before, you know, implementing these type of closures, and sometimes there's just no way around it. I mean, and, you know, just to put things into perspective, when I was in the bridge world, you know, you have a bridge over a major crossing, and you need to rebuild it, replace it wherever, you know, though that connection is offline, you know, sometimes for over a year. So, as, as much as we do not want to inconvenience the traveling public and we're sympathetic, sometimes we have no other options.
Yeah, the West Seattle Bridge was closed for...
Thank you, Scott. So I want to make sure that council was aware of this, and as Scott mentioned, we have been getting notice out to the community for, through various press releases, social media posts, and temporary construction signs, so, and then also to be able, if anybody called, be able to provide some additional information. So that concludes...
You guys have been doing a good job on getting the, the posts out there. People have literally come up to me and said, hey, I heard that Britton Parkway is going to be closed starting on Wednesday. So, thank you and good job.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So we'll go on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first, and as I mentioned, the, the mayor's forum met last Friday, and there was some, a little move around, we weren't normally scheduled to go to Thurston County, but the mayors realized that we had a new county manager and a new executive director for the port, and we thought it would be a good opportunity to get to know them a little bit better. And so, we meet with the, the chairs of the, the port and the chair of Thurston County and the, every other month. And so this was the, the county's, it was that turn, and so we worked out that where we could all go to the county and, and have that meeting. And so, it was really nice to sort of be in a more of an informal setting and, and get to know the, the new county manager and the new executive director for the port, and just to sort of hear about their backgrounds, and also we asked them what their priorities were going to be for the county and for the port going, going forward. And so we got to hear a little bit about their priorities, and both the, the new county manager and the executive director of port talked a lot about collaboration. And of course, that's what we love to hear, right? We need to be collaborating with Thurston County, the cities need to be collaborating with Thurston County and, and the port, and specific, and we'd love to have more collaboration with the port and develop opportunities to, to work together for, on economic development issues within our, within the city of Lacey, and all the cities were looking forward to that as well. And so, we're, we're really excited about hearing some of the new direction. There's definitely going to be some changes at the county and, and the port under new leadership, and, you know, we were really excited about that. We also got to meet the new mayor of Pecota, and I don't know if I've actually have officially said anything about Mayor Rob Gordon, who passed away. And that was, obviously, ended up being sudden, a lot more sudden than we thought, and it was very, very heartbreaking. And I was a part of a ceremony... And I was a part of a ceremony that I went to to the hospital and was there with the fire departments from all over Thurston County. Rob was also a a volunteer firefighter and firefighter in Dakota there for for many years. And all the firefight departments got together and were there to recognize him as as Rob was moved to a funeral home. And it was very, you know, very emotional, especially for for myself. We, all the mayors are have a special bond and relationship. And it's been, my heart goes out to Rob's family and everyone who knew Rob. It's, like I said, very, very, very difficult time, but we got to meet the new mayor. She's obviously taking a lot in. And we are all there to try to support her and say, you know, you need anything, you know, don't hesitate to reach out. That's we're here to all support each other. And so I got to talk to her for about another 45 minutes after the meeting, just to sort of talk her through a couple of things. You know, she's just, there's so much coming coming at her right now. But anyway, my heart goes out to Bicota and to the new mayor. I wish, wish her all, all the success that she can possibly get and we're here to support her. And so that is my report. Tech Mayor.
I have no report.
Then Councilmember Greenstein.
No report.
And Councilmember Stedman.
Real quick, when Orca met last week, it said a budget thing and, you know, pretty financially stable there and evaluation of the executive director. But on a sour note, it's kind of on the same thing. Willie Mays, Hall of Famer baseball player, died tonight in 93 or 94, I think it was. So I was a big fan of him and watched many Giants games as a kid. So, yeah, I just wanted to honor him in a little way.
Thank you, Councilmember Cox.
I have two reports tonight. The first is on the June 5 meeting of the Intercity Transit Authority. We have a whole lot of business to conduct, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. We adopted the 2025-2028 Transportation Improvement Program for projects that are expected to receive federal funding. This is done in concert with the Thurston Regional Planning Council and Transportation Policy Board. We authorized the general manager to execute a one-year contract with four one-year renewal options with American Landscape Services to provide landscaping and grounds maintenances at the intercity transit facilities. That contract is for $148,500, which includes sale tax. We authorized the general manager to conduct a contract, execute a contract with TSI to provide extended warranty coverage of our, the camera systems on the buses and dial-a-lift vehicles. And this will be effective September 8 and would run through December 2027. We also adopted the Intercity Transit Capital Improvement Plan. We declared two van pool vehicles as surplus. And those tend to go to organizations that apply to receive them, social services organizations. Let's see, what else? We received an update on the East Martin Way Gateway Station Roundabout Project that includes the design work done today. And we discussed potential additions to the scope to address community concerns. We've had this group opposed to this project come before us as well. And Thurston County has been hearing from them. So the message to them at the last meeting was, we're hearing you, we're looking at new options and we'll, we won't do this to you. We'll come up with a solution with you. And so I hope, I hope that's going to work out. We received an update on dial-a-lift services, travel training and the Bus Buddy Program. And the, the evening ended with much celebration over the winners of the 2024 American Public Transportation Association's International Rodeo. Intercity Transit is the 2024 Grand Champion Transit System, which is pretty fun. There's a fun tradition in Intercity Transit where we have, well, there's something to celebrate. There's a big tub of noise makers. And so we got to bring out the cow, cowbells and the clappers and tambourines and all kinds of fun. And it was a really nice occasion. Lot, we reviewed the preliminary 2025-2026 budget. And this process will have a similar timeline to what Troy has for Lacey. We received an update on Port of Olympia's Bud Inlet Sediment Cleanup Initiative. And that's intense. They're still looking at different options for that, so we'll kind of see where that goes. The board declared Lot's Deschutes Valley Properties as surplus. They bought the property some years back with the idea of maybe having reclaimed water plant there, but have decided that that's not necessary. We authorized the award of a construction contract for a roof replacement project. And then as with the Intercity Transit Authority meeting, we celebrated the four awards, state and national, that Lot has received for its Biological Process Improvements Project. And so that was a happy occasion as well. I think we mentioned at the last our work session that the one of these national awards is one of only eight given out ever, I mean, you know, in the world for this thing. So it's pretty prestigious work. That's my report.
Councilmember Vasquez.
I have two reports. Briefly, the Board of Health met and among other business, we established three subcommittees. So the Board of Health is going to convene a committee to talk about communication strategies, more outreach on public health topics with the community. We're going to have a subcommittee on policy. We want to make sure that the Board of Health is actually focusing on countywide public health policy and providing that guidance and direction. And we're going to convene a subcommittee on data because we think that along with policy and communication, sharing data about public health programs, statistics, immunization practices, all kinds of stuff is going to be very beneficial. So that's new. It feels like every time we have a Board of Health meeting, there's something new because we've got this expanded group and we're getting our feet under us. So last time we passed a strategic plan and we came up with bylaws. And this time we came up with subcommittees. So more exciting work to come with the Board of Health. And we are being led currently by Jen Freihite, who had been the Assistant Board of Health Director, Public Health Director. And she stepped up into the interim now that David Bain has departed our fair shores. We also talked about the isolation and loneliness epidemic that we then later on discussed before this council on the same day on Tuesday of last week. So it was a lot of very good discussion. Some of the nonprofits, including South Sound Senior Services, have requested that we consider taking action, calling that a crisis, like making a crisis declaration on isolation and loneliness and its impacts on our community. So the Board of Health, Board of Health is going to continue to talk about that and have some feedback from county staff on what that would mean if we decided to take that action. For Thurston Regional Planning Council, we met last Friday, covered a couple of topics. First, in 2024, TRPC is going to award and program over $19 million in federal funding for priority transportation projects. This is something that TPB also provides guidance on. So we collaborate with Thurston County, but we're also going to be awarding $550,000 in rural community support program funds for South County communities and tribes. So we make sure that South County, like the smaller, the smaller cities and the tribes have an opportunity to get some of those federal transportation project grant funds. Because otherwise, if they're competing with the larger cities that have more people who can write the grant requests and the plans, it's, it's hard for the little guys to compete. So we, we separate out a specific pool of funds so that the smaller counties are still able to get some of their projects funded. If you want to know what the process looks like, there's a Federal Transportation Grant Program and Rural Community Support Program Call for Projects Process Guidance and Application Instructions document that I'm happy to share. Yeah, I can send that out. But two of the things that are priority funding set asides in that process. One is the Rural Community Support Program. So we're going to make sure that rural communities get some funding. And that includes Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis Reservation, the Nisqually Indian Reservation, Bucota and the City of Rainier. And then the other priority in that process is trail preservation set aside. So we're going to put $1 million out of the carbon reduction program aside to fund pavement preservation projects on some of our shared use trail networks. So that's beneficial to anybody who uses those trails. One other thing that we had a briefing on at TRPC was our rural transit program. So did you know that TRPC runs a bus service? Yeah, I figured you knew. But some folks watching at home might not know that. TRPC is generally a planning and grant organization, but they also run a bus service. So they run the rural transit or RT, which is a weekday accessible route deviated demand service that goes out to the Chehalis Reservation, down to Tumwater, it goes to Bucota, Grand Mound, Rainier, Rochester and to Nino. So RT maintains connections to intercity transit, twin transit and Gray's Harbor Transit. And the way that they fund that, because they aren't that kind of agency, they don't usually provide services, is they get grants every year from DOT, from the State Department of Transportation to run that program. They're actually expanding services this year, which is cool. So they're going to have service now from Yelm to Rainier. There's going to be a midday service out to Tenino instead of just on the beginning of the day and the end of the day. There's going to be service to Mellon Street, the E Station in Centralia. And that's a connection point to the twin and Gray's Harbor Transit areas. There's going to be Saturday service. So that's all very exciting. But I wanted to share a little bit of the background just because it was just baffling to me when I learned about this. But TRPC picked up running rural transit 20 years ago to fill a void after the $30 car tab initiative, 796 or 976 created a budget shortfall. So 796 really just cut the feed out from under some of our transit programming. And so Intercity Transit had to shrink its service area. And when it did that, TRPC recognized that without Intercity Transit, people in rural areas just would not have access to a bus at all. And so they picked this up by going out and getting those grant funds from the Department of Transportation. So it's not ideal. And TRPC continues to be concerned that someday, if they don't get the grants, they just won't be able to provide those services. But it's kind of a unique little thing that TRPC runs. The last thing that TRPC talked about was the member assessment fees. I mentioned this at a previous meeting, but we're going to be, well, we convened a subcommittee to talk about reviewing the member assessment fees for the different jurisdictions that pay into TRPC. So the assessment dollars are TRPC's most important fund source. And there's a lot of competition for those funds. They fund critical IT capital purchases like computers and servers. Assessment funds, let's see, assessments fund our support of council and foundational data and GIS work. So like the profile, the population and employment forecasting that TRPC does. And as TRPC gets more grants, there's more pressure on the assessments as a local match because we have to put in a certain amount to get those grants. So there's going to be a subcommittee convening a couple of times between July and September to talk about potential alternatives. So expect to hear about that again in the future. Those are my reports.
Thank you. The, the, first of all, the Karen Parkers is really the one that championed rural transit. If it wasn't for Karen Parkers, it just wouldn't exist. And it's very unique that TRPC is running a small transit service. I mean, it's just so unique. And so, but they've been providing that service for now, like I said, 20 years. And it's, I think they would love for it be taken over. But it's just like, you know, there's, because there's, it's all, there's a lot of work that goes into that and managing that. And is TRPC the right organization to to do that? And so I know there's been some conversations about that. But what they've done and about their ability to expand that is just absolutely amazing. And then I just wanted to have a quick shout to the county. It's a county that's setting aside some of their federal funds to allow the small, the rural cities to get automatic federal dollars. The county did not have to do that. They agreed to set some of their federal dollars that they were going to be receiving aside. And then a whole process was set up to apply for those, those, that funding. And they extended it to the tribes as well, which was very gracious. So just a quick shout out to the county for for doing that for the rural cities and the tribes. Okay, Councilmember Dunning.
All right, so Solid Waste met on the 5th. We got a little presentation from Brady, Evan Brady, who owns Brady Chucking. He just established a newer compost facility. And he went over their Earth Day kind of drive where they donated 20 cubic yards of compost, which was really successful for them. They got rid of all of it. And it's something that they did in partnership with the county. So the county sent people to help out with it. And it was a good success all the way around. I think it's something they're going to continue to do on a regular basis. HR or HTR started a solid waste rate study that providing a few different rate options moving forward. Just to highlight, they haven't had a rate increase since 2012. So it's been, it's been a while. They're going to be providing a few options to the county in early 2025 with hopes of implementing that at the beginning of 2026. So we'll be getting some information on that when when that process moves further down. And then styrofoam ban went into effect June 1st. You still might see some out there, so you can use what you have. You just can't buy new styrofoam. So if you still see it, it's not the end of the world. It's just now illegal for anybody, even a person, to sell someone styrofoam, so. The, in lieu of a couple of the meetings, the regular meetings for Solid Waste this summer, they're going to be doing facility tours. So that's something that we decided because we really get a good grasp of what they do when we actually can go see these facilities. So that's something that's going to be on the agenda here coming up. That's all I have for Solid Waste. Today was, I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, the Visitors Bureau's annual retreat. So the sole focus of that was the Destination Master Plan. That is all we went over for eight hours. So as you remember, there were 29 highlighted items. The first thing that happened is 18 of those were just thrown away. And not necessarily thrown away, but basically 11 items were what the Visitors Bureau actually would be in charge of. So that is their priorities. And the other, the other 18, say it again. Yeah, and but but still, those action items, they've been in in identifying the leaders of those and then passing that information along for them to to take charge of those. So our goal during the retreat was to identify the top five priorities of those 11 that still, that still remained. So the top five that were left were tribal relations, sporting events, outdoor recreation, connectivity and funding. So we did a whole scale based on the importance of all those. Those were determined to be the ones that that were most important, that they could actually accomplish with the current funding that they have. The one that is slightly confusing if just based on service connectivity. So that has to do with signage, social media, advertising. So that one was one that I was, I was really pushing for because that applies to all the others. So pretty much outside of tribal relations, all of the action items that they can actually take charge of and start running with have to do with getting advertising and people into the community. And they aren't items that cost a lot of time and resources or things that is really just shifting those priorities and can actually have measured statistics on how they're affecting the the community. So a big one of that funding was automatically selected by the VCB. There is not a lot of options for additional funding outside of getting more people into into lodging. And so, so really, when it comes down to it, they. they have to determine, really look at and evaluate how their budget, as currently constructed, can prioritize these and shift around money in order to, in order to make them happen. And the thing that I really advocated for during this was a focus on each, because Thurston County is more than just Thurston County. It's a lot of different areas. And I think when it comes to, to the cities and providing funding, we have to see actual measurable outcomes based on our city. And so when I asked, you know, a lot of questions about funding was, well, we need money for everything. And it's kind of like, if you have two quarterbacks, you don't have any quarterbacks. Well, you actually have to know what funding is going towards what and what are the outcomes of that funding. And so I really kind of hammered that home. I was like, well, we need to know as a city what this money is actually going towards and what we're getting out of it versus just saying, we need more. The common answer, we need more money, we need more money. But if you don't actually know what you need that money for, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. And so, so I think there was some really good response to that of starting with, okay, well, how, how are we actually going to present this information? So the things that we really recommended were a lot more social media advertising, retargeting towards people that are already here to get them in. And then also doing a better job of communicating to the people on the board and the different stakeholders how their actions are actually affecting those individual communities. Because the information really gets presented now as a whole. And I think that's why there's sometimes some, not necessarily mistrust is the word, but apprehension because of, you know, how things were done in the past. And we're really trying to move forward and, and really focus on, on benefiting everybody. And in order to do that, you have to prove it. So I really pushed that home. And otherwise, if there are any questions on the 256-page Destination Master Plan, I can answer anything. So feel free to ask away if you do.
Actually, I have, do have a question when it comes to funding, since you brought this up. The VCB has to have taken a pretty big hit over this past couple of years because obviously, they, they got direct funding for hotel night stays, right? And we've seen a ton of hotels go away. I mean, we've lost a lot of rooms in Thurston County. You lost the old Red Lion, we lost here in Lacey. We've seen other hotels be converted, burned down, you know, all, all those things. And so how much of a budget has that?
There hasn't been, and keep in mind, the reporting is always about a quarter behind. So some of the recent closures haven't quite caught up to, to what that is. And so that was a topic of discussion, was they're trying to forecast. They, they have a hard time because they're forecasting for next year's budget. But there's a lot of factors in there. And so they try to be kind of conservative at the beginning of the year. And then sometimes, you know, they'll get towards the end of the year and money's, money's not there. So there's been a higher or an increase in occupancy rate in Thurston County.
Yeah.
But especially lately, there's been a lot more closures that we quite haven't seen the effects of. So I think there will be, there hasn't yet been a decrease in, in funds received. But I think there is a estimation that there will be a little bit of dip. There just has been a higher occupancy rate per hotel over the last year or so. A couple percentage increase over the past year.
Hotels, right?
Yeah, there's been some, as we said, there's been, so, so it's, it's kind of like, it's kind of a give or take. But I think we are in that point where, especially when, you know, the only kind of space to have a convention shuts down, that quite hasn't, hasn't hit yet. So there will be some of those things kind of affecting, affecting budgeting. And that's why a lot of the, and this, it was interesting that a lot of the priorities that we identified, which is kind of the way I, I was hoping it would, didn't involve increased budgets. It really involved shifting priorities. And that's, I think, what the goal of, the goal of it was to figure out the priorities that we can actually accomplish now based on what we have. And that drive more revenue to accomplish some of the other things that we, we aren't able to fund yet.
Excellent. Is that, is that it? End of, end of your report?
Yeah, and I'm sure once this stuff is implemented, you know, we'll, we'll obviously have them back and give a really in-depth briefing on the things that they came up with. But there's a good direction and a lot of partnership and, and with the different stakeholders and cities to, to kind of get this moving in the right direction.
Great. Well, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. But a little good of the order here. This last Saturday, I was able to participate. And I know several councilmembers, I think, stopped by the, the Juneteenth celebration at the rack. And boy, it was really scary because the weather was doing all crazy, signs of crazy stuff on, on Saturday. So a big, really big shout out to city staff and all the volunteers who, who made that work. And Fred, U. Harris, the lodge, they woke up bright and early and got to barbecuing. And given the unknown about the weather, and it was, it was pouring down rain like, like 20, like 15 minutes before I had to give my speech. And I'm just like, please, and then the sun came out. And I was like, but it was still really windy. But I was very honored to, again, participate in that and for the city of Lacey to be one of the co-hosts of, of that celebration. It was great. This is, you know, our third year of partnering with them and along with the city of Tumwater. And, but the Lacey staff just did amazing job under the, you know, especially under circumstance. And it was great to see our, our police department there and interacting. And just really give a, you know, big shout out to all the city staff who, who did that. And that will lead to tomorrow being actual Juneteenth. And so, which is a holiday, so we will be closed here at the city of Lacey. But just a shout out to everyone and happy Juneteenth. With that, we've reached the end of the agenda. So without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.